Sycamore City Council, here's your agenda. Pause the video if you need to, to look at it. And there you go, there's your agenda. See, you get snacks at Sycamore Council.
I like sports more if somebody is painting. But as I was on fifth string in basketball, I don't think there was any hope for me.
I got two words, do you? Travel ball?
No. Emma likes to play everything, she chairs, she plays softball.
Travel cheer. Travel gymnastics.
You get into travel ball, you told my ten thousand pop. Yeah, before we get started, everybody turn the phones down.
I just, I just, we had a serious review that just called me about a dog bite and said that you reported it. And I said, we've not got a call about a dog bite, dog. We got someone here from a dog bite, and we have to report it.
Do we know whose dog it was?
I've got seven of these. One years. Well, hopefully, we're gonna have a pretty extensive dog.
I know, I just, I, this is what I keep doing.
You know, I do that, I do this a lot.
Although, my name wasn't like to a chip daddy's thing, I guess.
You know it's gonna be good.
Is it a little trouble?
A little, a little tiredly looking.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Bear his teeth up.
They ready to go.
You're not afraid of human behavior yourself? You're gonna have to define behaving.
That's what I say, somebody said bad behavior is behavior.
We trying to. Tell you that we're gonna do that a lot. God mighty.
Are you kidding me? Calling sick somehow.
Is that you? Y'all, let me call this meeting order, and I also want to tell you right quick. I always sometimes forget, but my phone is not on silent. And the reason why it's not is because I am on call fucking wrong. And I have to leave it on. Y'all pardon me, interrupts, and if it goes off, I step out, they're free to take over. Then come back in. All right. Let's call this meeting's order of freedom. I'm about to leave this room for a prayer.
Lord, we again thank you so much for the privilege, your name, the opportunity to serve our community. We ask that you would give us clarity of mind and integrity in everything that we say and do, that you may receive the honor in Jesus' name, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which was changed, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
All right, thank y'all. Any discussion about the agenda?
Move to approve and second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor.
Move to approve both sets of minutes as stated, second.
Motion and second, all in favor. All right. I have a proposal here. Next, I'm hunting. And y'all should have a package on y'all. Our car insurance is with Burtonshire Hathaway. We have that, and we have a separate little policy on our machinery. Our premium on car insurance. And the machinery runs us about eighty-five, uh, ninety-eight thousand dollars a year coming back then. Now, I had asked someone over, Wesley Five Edge, if he would make us proposal, because that's all we got, all insurance we got. We don't have insurance on our buildings. We do not have general liability, we do not have professional liability or anything else. He came in with a proposal. And went through with me the other day, the other night. Me and him sit down and talk. He was real excited about it, and since I seen it, I got excited. He can provide for us. If y'all look through this, our automobile insurance would run somewhere around sixty thousand a year, which is thirty-two hun- thirty-two thousand dollars savings per year there. But if we add a car, for some reason, say the police department got no car, our premium would go up. On the same token, if we take one off, it don't go down. It will stay the same. We could add three vehicles, they added, it don't run our premium. That's on the, uh, uh, car end. This package includes car insurance. It includes insurance on our machinery. It includes insurance on our buildings. Every one of the buildings in the city that we have. It also includes general liability. It also includes professional liability. It also includes, uh, personal liability. And it also includes cyber liability. For one hundred and six thousand dollars a year. That's not, but about seven thousand dollars more than what we pay right now. And all we have is, is, all we have is automobiles. And, uh, so this year, I would really like y'all to consider, because it's a no-brainer. The, the first, I mean, the professional liability, I really have worried about. And the reason why is because we have our patrolmen that are out working in the community and the roads. And they have no liability on what you're, you know? And that's scary. So does anybody have any discussion on this?
Got a question.
After wait.
Do you have any idea what the current market capitalization is for the company that's making this proposal? What I'm asking is, do they have the kind of resources to pay out in the event that something catastrophic happened?
Yes.
Okay.
According to what I've been told, yes.
It occurs to me that this is a tremendous amount of coverage for not much more money.
Yes, and this is someone local that we can reach to drop the line.
That's why I asked about the current market capitalization. If they've got the resources to make good on this, this seems to me a good idea.
Not only, not only does it seem like a good idea, as much as I hate to spend a nickel, that poor buffalo is still screaming the last time I took him out of my pocket. I move we accept this proposal.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the court.
I have a question.
After wait.
All right, so our general insurance budget a couple of years ago was thirty-five-ish thousand dollars.
Yep.
And we went over the budget just fairly.
Yep.
This past year, it was also thirty-five thousand dollars, and we spent obviously more than double that. So when did we lose our liability? When did we stop? When have, when was the last time we had liability coverage?
We had liability coverage probably nine, ten months ago, wouldn't you say? Uh, it was with, uh, Atwater, Atwater. And all of a sudden, it got canceled, and we got canceled by Lincoln.
Remember that happen?
Yep. And I would say that's probably been close to a year ago, or yeah, probably the last summer.
So we had liability and auto insurance before for thirty-five thousand?
None.
So in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, when our general insurance budget was thirty-five thousand and we spent thirty-seven, that was for automobile and liability? So what were we spending thirty-five thousand dollars on in twenty twenty-three, twenty-four?
I would have to go back and look at twenty-three, twenty-four, but I'm dealing with twenty-four, twenty-five right now.
Seems like we have a conversation about insurance every year. Because somebody dropped something, or somebody didn't provide this, or somebody bumping up our prices.
We had, okay, I can tie this together. The budget had been approved, and it was approved by y'all. Not by me, by y'all. Now, that's saying that. All of a sudden, I think it was last summer, I can go back and look, straight after I'm almost positive I'm right, that we got canceled by the liability company. And we also got canceled by Atwater. We had to scramble, because we had to have insurance at least on our police vehicles and our machinery. And that came at a big price when we had to have it, and we had to have it yesterday.
Wait a minute, Mr. Mayor, may I speak on this?
Sure.
Sixteen years ago, City of Sycamore had a budget for the year, a total of about four hundred eighty-five thousand dollars for everything. Also, at that time, we had one clerk, three public works employees, uh, some germs still here, and, uh, one full-time, one sometimes two part-time police. Uh, the starting pay for a new employee at that time was eight dollars per hour, which was above minimum wage. Today, uh, we have, oh, also, we were in a building smaller than this council chamber for the whole city, and the public work had to work out basically a closet in the fire department. Today, we're in a fifteen thousand square foot building, which is paid for. We also have three clerks. Uh, we have a fully staffed, full-time police force around the clock instead of part-time. We also have four instead of three public work employees for the time being. Uh, and minimum wage, the actual minimum wage we offer to new employees is more in the range of twenty and more dollars per hour. If you'll notice, the price of an automobile has gone from twelve thousand for a brand-new one to twenty-five, thirty thousand for a brand-new one.
It ain't, it ain't, it ain't even twelve thousand a minute. For a new car, it ain't even twelve thousand dollars a minute.
Yeah.
On government contract, let me correct the record. It used to be, not long ago, under twenty thousand, about, I know that for that.
Yes. So
And I'm not, I'm not disputing that, I'm talking about two years ago, really, for the budget numbers. We're talking about comparing two years ago to now, and it doubling. And you're saying that two years ago, we were spending thirty-five for car insurance and liability. That's what we spent in general, that's what we spent in general insurance two years ago, all across the board, according to our own budget.
That was liability for everybody that works the city.
That was general insurance, line item of general insurance two years ago. We spent thirty-seven thousand dollars.
The budget would reflect that. Keep your eye.
So
But here's the problem with that. Uh, the insurance company, after the budget was improved in operation consistently year after year, has, uh, we have had increases, some of them slight, and most of them drastic, in the insurance premiums we've charged.
Well, that's why I want to ask one question.
Let me finish, if you please. You don't need to rudely interrupt me again. Oh, I am called. You haven't seen me when I'm not called. If you will notice on the spreadsheet that you prepared on your personal computer, uh, your complaint about the budget being higher, yet we have come in under budget every year without paying. Sometimes an item would be over, a line item, but the budget has not been, uh, overspent in the years we've been here. And James, you've been here nearly as long as I have, you know that. I, I'm saying that this is, the fact that we are having to pay a larger premium now than we did, uh, two years ago should not shock anybody, and is certainly no reason for, uh, causing, uh, an argument. But to, to claim that we, uh, have overspent is ridiculous.
Well, first of all, I didn't claim that we overspent, I asked a simple question, and I will not be talked to like this in front of the council. I deserve just as much respect as you do, and I have given you that respect. I apologize for interrupting you, but you will not talk to me again that way. I am a grown adult woman, and I'm sorry if you do not buy the fact that I am the one on this council, but so be it. You will not talk to me the same way that you have against other women.
Okay, let's keep it in a calm manner here.
Okay, my deal, my deal, that it is. We went from thirty-seven thousand now to a hundred and six thousand. That's almost
Where, where do you get thirty-seven thousand?
From, what you just said about that.
Shall I remind you again that the council, you included, voted on that budget?
Yeah, I voted on every budget, come in here. I mean, I, I didn't.
Yeah.
I mean, my, my vote counts just much to anybody else.
Sure, sure it does.
And whenever
I agree.
Our, our premiums, they go up almost three times. Then I haven't the right to say something about that, if it all rests on everybody else.
As I just pointed out while ago, your premium ain't going up three times. I said that we are spending currently for car insurance and for insurance on machinery, ninety-eight thousand dollars a year.
Right. I agree with what you just said, so it's roughly eight thousand dollars extra.
Yeah.
I'm not disagreeing with the number.
Yeah, we got
What I'm saying is, when it shows up on the budget, it's thirty, say forty thousand dollars, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars.
Right.
And now it's gonna show up at a hundred and six thousand dollars, then there should be somebody saying, what's the deal here?
Right.
And so that's what, what I'm asking is, what is the deal? Okay? If we had to have an emergency situation to get the insurance, and it wound up ninety-eight thousand dollars, then this is seven thousand, eight thousand dollars more than that. Then the question is, we went from thirty-five thousand to ninety plus, and now we're going to a hundred and six plus?
Well, I explained why we went from thirty-five
Yeah.
to ninety something.
But what I'm saying is, I don't know if we voted on ninety thousand.
Yes, you did. We done got it, hey, hey, if you had my budget on. I, I
We weren't, we weren't out we wasn't out of it by the time the budget was okay.
The general insurance budget that we voted for in twenty twenty-four to twenty-five was thirty-five thousand three hundred, and we spent sixty-four thousand.
Yep.
In general insurance.
Right. Seems to me that on its face, we're not budgeting enough money for insurance.
Problem is, the insurance companies, rural, are not in business to help folks that are in business to make money.
Absolutely. They're not in business to insure to us. Their business is to take premiums and not pay out.
We had
That's a big
We had sat down a lot in the mouth for general insurance. It was running within those front, once again. I, I don't think nobody gets it here. We were running in those front. All of a sudden, Atwater canceled us. We got canceled by the liability company. We had to make a move. We came in, made a proposal that we had to have insurance on cars and the machinery. It was voted on by this council, it was approved. Yes, it was a lot more than what I wanted to pay. And yep, it busted the line item. I won't argue that one. That's the truth. This year, I've tried to offset that and put it to where it should be.
Wait, my main question was to clarify when we had liability at that time when we set that budget, or whether that was just
Yeah, we did, we did, when we set that budget.
That's all I'm gonna do to try to clarify.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna channel my inner Alan Coker.
Wait.
If we're gonna, if, if we're gonna spend a hundred and six odd thousand dollars on insurance, we need to budget that.
Yeah.
And when now, in our call meeting, when we ever have a call meeting, get ahead of the process here.
Right.
Uh, our budget needs to reflect that.
Right. I, I'll
It's a hundred and twenty on the new year.
Okay.
I'll concur with you there. I will not argue that point.
I'm not disagreeing, the insurance companies don't want to make money, but as a council, we need to try to save as much money as we can too.
Exactly.
You know?
There's, 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 there's another alternative. City can self-insure, and when we have a catastrophe, we're out of business.
I would, I ain't into that self-insure.
From a practical point of view, unfortunately, self-insuring is not practical.
You're absolutely right.
One law.
Which is why the state of Georgia does that.
We're unfortunately at the mercy of the insurance industry. Uh, not that there are not good people in, but they are not in it to help the city or individuals being the ones that make money.
This can be taken. And I can have the individual representative company to come to the next call meeting, because you'll find out in a minute, we're gonna be having a half one.
Question.
And he can answer any questions that y'all may have.
When does, when does our current insurance run out?
We got a couple of months, so we're fine right now.
Okay.
Uh, however, the policy term on their proposal is the sixteenth of this month is when it is to take effect. It's, is it valid?
The one we got, we can't cancel it anytime. To me, period, it's a no-brainer with having the full package and paying eight thousand dollars more than it is to have what we had and, but
Well, I think it's imperative we get liability and add it to whatever policies we have. I mean, that's a, that's a must-have.
Right.
And if, if it costs what it costs, and we're budgeted for it,
Right.
then, I, I mean, I see no problem with us going ahead and approving.
I just don't wanna say, I just wanna have a budget showing thirty odd thousand dollars we spent three times that.
I'll beat, I'll beat that area.
Well, it currently shows a hundred and twenty for insurance, so
Okay.
So we're covered.
Right.
Yeah. That's fine.
That's a big chunk, that's seven hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Okay. So what's council's wishes on the insurance then?
We have a vote, and we have a second, maybe a good order. If there's more, if there's no more debate, call question. It was, it was, uh, it moved it a second. He moved it, I seconded it.
Okay, all in favor? So carry. Item six is gonna be tabled. Here's the original one. We have found out that we have to advertise for a public hearing. And so in two weeks, we will be having a call meeting, that's why I put out, while we go, to discuss and vote on the budget. Now, if anybody wants to discuss, excuse me one second. Won't if there's anybody wants to discuss anything about the budget, this proposed budget, they're welcome to discuss, we just will not be voting on it tonight.
Why do we have to have a public hearing?
Because the law states that.
For passing, for passing the budget period?
Huh?
For passing a budget period?
Have to have a public hearing, then you have to have a, it's gotta be chronological.
Have to have a public hearing, what we can, and then you have to have a, it's gotta be chronological. And these, I need, I need a vote by the council to send these dates to the fire grass for, uh, publishing. Um, but the notice will go out next week, actually the seventeenth. Public hearing will be the twenty-third, cause you gotta have it a week before you have to vote, and the last day to have the vote is the thirtieth. So the public hearing will be the twenty-third, the vote will be on the thirtieth. I just think know what times y'all want to advertise that.
Next week, five?
No, the time of the meeting.
Time.
What time you have a public hearing and what time you have a call meeting.
We'll have it six, five. Or you wanna have a public hearing?
Five-thirty.
Five-thirty?
Five-thirty.
So we're gonna do the public hearing before call meeting?
Public hearing's gonna be on the twenty-third, call meeting will be on the thirtieth. That'd be a week before.
Yeah.
Hey, you said for?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Week before. So that's for both of them?
Yeah.
Is that what they're voting?
Yeah. Both of them will be at five-thirty. And, uh, I need a motion of second and a vote on that.
So move.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay.
Diana, can I just email you first and one more?
Okay. All right. And item seven uh, is we're gonna table the executive. And you wanna bring up anything on this or?
Uh, there had been a significant amount of discussion roundabout with employees concerning a raise. Uh, and that, uh, was attended to the issue that we already had on the agenda concerning cost of living increase. Uh, there's been, uh, there's been an idea that, uh, five percent plus a dollar for COLA and raise. Uh, beyond that, uh, I'm, I'm interested in knowing what the council thinks. Uh, cost of living's gone up across the board, uh, despite the fact the inflation rate ticked down a little bit. But at the same time, we are, let's, let's remember that we are competitive with other municipalities concerning, uh, acquiring and retaining quality people. And let's be honest, we got, I think we got one of the best municipal employee teams we could possibly have. So, uh, in that regard, I would recommend, uh, COLA of five percent plus a dollar.
So when do they normally get their rate?
Well, we got fiscal year beginning right now, or two weeks from now.
Now, when do we normally vote on a rate? Usually when the new budget comes in, it's figured into the new budget, that's usually.
And since we gotta recalculate the budget anyway.
And I'm not, I'm not saying let's go this way or that way either way. Um, how would it?
That's my notion.
Answer your question.
We were, we were contemplating having a COLA rate, uh, COLA increase anyway. Uh, my idea is COLA is gonna, uh, I was, I would give the understanding COLA is five percent. Five percent plus a dollar, that will come out to about a total of two dollars an hour? Ray, you looking best?
About that, but. I don't know. I don't know if we're ready to take that one up. We need to sit down and go over some numbers between now and budget adoption.
Okay.
So you wanna table that, uh, what?
Please, please table that when the time be.
I'm good with that.
Okay, table. And so item eight would be tabled. Now, item nine, uh, Sean's department got a new lawnmower in, I think they like it pretty good. And, uh, it's got a real good warranty on it, and our idea was to replace both of them. So, uh, what I'm asking council for is to let us spend more Splotts funds and let us buy one more to replace out here on the street. It'll be out of Splotts, not out of city funds. Same kind.
That's what I would recommend.
What we're gonna do is, uh, owe one more. We would eventually, don't know when that would be, but we'll see what all we have got. We'd eventually, eventually put them up in a surplus sale or maybe seal bids or something. That's what we're gonna do. We can do it in seal bid or do it.
Seal, seal bid would be the thing to do.
Yeah, so. That's what we can do, but we wanna see if we got some more stuff that needs to be added to it. You know, whether it might be another bid or something other than needs to go in, or if they something that Sean needs to get out of his way in his department, or Ben needs to get out of his department out of the way. You know, then pick it all we put in one thing, you know, we'd advertise it and then they could bid on it. We're not pulling an act. Yes, I said that.
And that's W-O-O-D-R-U-F.
You didn't know that? That I answered your question, like what we did with the other thing. I'm sorry, I didn't understand. Okay. What's council's wishes on the move?
How much did Alan got?
Thirteen thousand, six hundred.
How much?
Alan cost thirteen thousand, six hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-two cents.
I thought we just agreed to, well.
No, we agreed on fifteen, fifteen in Jan.
I had, they were three bids and I agreed up to the highest.
John Deere was the highest.
Yeah.
That John Deere was like fifteen.
Are we getting another one just like it?
That's what, if we get another one, I would like another one just like it.
Absolutely, we not wanna see, is you standing on top of it like a Roman gladiator?
Okay.
No, I don't, yeah, I, I go along with getting a new lawnmower.
Okay, you making that a motion?
I'm making a motion to get a new lawnmower.
Second? Okay, second, all in favor? Okay, so carry.
Can I, can I point out the, um, fellows that have been trying it out have renamed it from Gravely to Gravy because it is so much better. It's the best.
They're actually calling lawnmower Gravy?
That's what they're saying. Also, you know, my joke is American made.
Nothing works like a deal.
All right, uh, item ten. The MCCI cloud stories that we have approved. We got a little bit of issue here. Um, we again made a proposal. An estimate for city services. We sent this over to Dustin to look over. But he'll wanna make sure what we signed. Well, he found some discrepancies in here that wasn't too good. One, it says client represents a warrant that it shall have all rights. That's us now, have all rights and licenses, including limitation to those third parties. Who's third parties and what license and if we sign this, will we sign off that we have, we don't, we, we don't have no idea at all. Another one down here. It says that, uh, we would be available Monday through Friday to, uh, assist on tasks of completing services. We don't work on Friday down here. So that's another discrepancy. Failure to provide this access will result in a change of order increasing the client, uh, the cost to client in timeline of the product. In other words, they can increase the cost if we don't do what they tell us to do. Client will provide a single point of contact responsible for coordinating communications and scheduling amongst client stakeholders. All services will be performed Monday through Friday, eight AM to five PM. Client will acquire, install and set up the TLC certificates that meet application requirements. Another purchase of managed cloud services may cover some of these assumptions deliverables. General inclusion. MCCI is not responsible for creating or maintaining backups. Backup planes or recovery planes, that's what this is all about. Now.
Yes and no. The, the mission is to create a searchable database. Creating a backup copy of a searchable database is not part of their contract. And creating a, creating a backup should not be particularly complicated. Uh, we could get a, we could get a half terabyte hard drive, it would provide more than enough storage and just copy the, copy the, I'd probably copy the E. Uh, with a, with a modern computer, that should take more than five minutes for, for the entire database.
All right, carry on. Except we're specific, uh, note MCCI is not responsible for creating training documentation. But they say they're gonna provide training. If they ain't got any training documentation, that makes no sense at all. Except we're specifically noted, no custom coding is included. All right, other inclusion. Determining records management settings, they're not responsible for this. They're not responsible for determining records, management settings, cleaning up existing documents, installing software, or configuring workflows. And last but not least, they're not responsible for customizing training materials for the client.
My suspicion from thirty thousand feet is that a lot of this is, they're using terminology that is proprietary that we don't exactly understand. Case in point, configuring management settings. What they're probably saying, I don't know this, but they're probably saying who has system administrator access. And that's gonna be the city clerk. The city clerk and probably you. Uh, how many people can go in and alter and modify and add and subtract documents from the database? Uh, case in point, I put my grades in at the end of the semester.
Right.
But once my grades are in and even published, I can't go back in and change them. That has to be done by someone with sysadmin access. Uh, and single point of contact, that's common practice, everybody does that. Uh, again, it would be, I think it would be highly beneficial, they would come in and explain these things to us in open session.
All right. I'll see if I can't reach out to William and see if we can't get on here.
They can ask this person, correct?
Didn't he?
No, that was, that was the other guy last year, got.
Okay.
Yeah. No, they didn't, they didn't. All right, we'll. Uh.
Take it there.
Okay, department head. Start with you, Sean.
All right, uh, one thing I was, I'm gonna ask for is, uh, this time of year we bought mosquito spray. Uh, that the budget is probably gonna be over what the line item is by a little bit. I think last year it was around thirty-eight hundred dollars for two drums.
Two drums left is all here?
Yeah.
So four, it's gonna be four thousand?
It's gonna be close to four thousand. And in the new budget, it's up four.
On a new budget?
On, on.
We, we'd be buying out of the old budget, but the new budget is, I have to look at this, so what is, we're putting four on.
You got sufficient funds in the old budget?
I have almost sufficient funds.
We got thirty-two hundred allotted in the new budget, right this way.
And the current budget?
No, the new, oh, yeah, 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 the current budget, thirty-two hundred. I'm sorry, I had the wrong type. Anything else?
No, no.
Yeah, if y'all want to prove the man to buy that, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Thirty-eight, four thousand, somewhere along that.
The.
Whatever it costs about two drums.
I also mosquito, two guns and mosquito spray.
So you need eight, you need about eight hundred dollars above, above the line item?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion to approve, two drums.
Okay, and we got the second, all in favor? Okay, so carry. Anything else? Charlie?
No, Charlie, no.
Ben?
I did. So I have, uh.
You have the floor.
I have talked to, I think the mayor, I, I discussed it with Alan and Galt May, and gotten around to everybody. But I had a guy come in, um, we've been just looking at the idea of, uh, putting a fence up around behind the police department, um, to give us some privacy and a secure area. Uh, to get our vehicles out of here. And whenever we have chase or something else, we have vehicles to do search warrants, I can keep them where they need to be down at my department instead of up here so they'll be in my custody the whole time for our equipment. Right now, it's, it's kind of wide open to the public, and it's hard to do those types of things down there. Um, so I, I got a gentleman to come give me a quote on a fence, a six-foot privacy fence with a twelve-foot double iron gate. Um, to go around the back of the office in that whole area there, because we had a Colvert put in last year to give us access to the back of the property. Um, the.
You do know that you own the property next door too, don't you?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
And over far enough, and, and we had kind of measured it out and make sure we'd get a rollback in with vehicles, get our vehicles back there, be a little bit easier to maintain, keeping them on battery chargers, things like that. Everything would be right there in house, and I wouldn't have to worry about someone, you know, bothering. So the, the, the best quote that I've got was from, uh, Nick Massey. Um, he gave me a quote of sixty-nine hundred dollars to put a fence up, a privacy fence, solid privacy fence, so.
That's not bad.
No, um, and I've seen his work, he does a great job. I talked to a couple of other fence companies, one said they would do it, not for near that much. The other one, uh, a lot of what we have around here now is farm fence companies. And, uh, so I just wanted to throw that out there. I'd like to, due to the way our budget is this year, that, that's one of those things, I kind of waited to the end to see if we were in good enough shape to, you know, I like to spend money on, on our infrastructure, on things that make, make our job better and, and, um, so.
Like we're gonna have to put up a shelter down there too, at some point in time?
Uh, maybe in the future, I mean, it's nothing, it's gotta be done right now.
One thing to bear in mind, this is a bunch of chain of custody issues, it is anything else.
And it, it, it has been for us, you know, I, I don't like having to store vehicles here that we're in custody of. It, because I need limited access to a lot of those, and I don't need the record company keeping.
Somebody walking down the street.
Keeping custody of them, because we had one that got damaged a while back and, and it's he said, she said, we don't know. So I, I would just. So I, I would just, it would tie everything in down there where it's, you know, right under our protection and watch twenty-four seven.
What was the amount of that quote again?
Sixty-nine hundred.
All right, checking the, this year's budget, the current year. You've got enough left over in the vehicle line item?
Right.
To take that out of this year's budget without having to apply it to next year.
Right, that, that's, that's what I was kind of hoping, just looking at how far I was under now. And that's really the only thing I wanted to do this year outside of, because we got a body armor and all already, which not in yet, but we've, that's out of the way. Um, I think it would be a benefit to the department.
Is there any other security that would need to be added to the fence in any way besides, I mean, like motion sensors, lighting?
The gates locked, I've got lighting in the back now. Um, I've talked to, uh, Brian McCree that did our camera system. I got a price from him to come and it, it's not much, he's gonna come put two more cameras in the back so that we have, you know, so it'll be, it'll be surveilled twenty-four seven, um, lock gates. So.
What again was the height of that fence?
Six feet.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, got a motion to second on the floor, all in favor? You down on this? What is?
Can we go ahead with it? We at that point now?
Go ahead, we have public input.
Are we?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so, as you guys remember, um, when House Bill one forty came up, there was a ad running in the paper. All right, I'm not sure if it made it to the editor, but I edited the original draft of what was going to be put in the newspaper, because I was sure that was gonna create a lot of questions, a lot of rumors and a lot of problems. Um, not sure if our editor got it, it was, it was sent the same day I received it, the edited version, but that was not what was printed and not throwing point fingers at anybody. I just knew in the future it was gonna cause issues and it has. Um, and I would love to be on record with this, Ben. Um, I've heard for the last two months that we are shutting our police department down, um, that we will no longer have services in the city. I've had citizens ask me numerous times, um, and I want to assure our citizens, our police department is not going anywhere. Um, we're gonna continue to provide great service to the citizens of this city. Um, the only thing that that bill would have done was greatly limit the resources that we have to do our job. But as long as I'm employed here and the guys that I've got here, this city's gonna remain a safe city to live in and we're gonna provide service around the clock. Um, so I just, I wanted that to be, um, out in the, in the public, um, just to know, just to ease people's minds, know that, you know, we're here. Uh, our budget's been in, it's been in great shape this year, we've been able to move forward a great deal with our department and I've been very proud of my guys, they've worked really hard this year with the staff that we've had. We've been under an audit as well, so I've sort of held back on the hiring for a little while, that looks great. Um, I've been able to get them equipment that they greatly needed and remain quite a bit under budget. Um, so our, our, our budget years look really good, I wanna continue to do that for the citizens of Sycamore and, uh, show them that we can, we can do it in a good way, the cheapest way possible. Um, because I'm a citizen here as well, you know, it's my tax dollars, you guys' tax dollars and, and, uh, one more thing, I guess, uh, the mayor's heard and I've heard, I, I, I supposedly have resigned and been fired at least three or four times over the past two weeks. So I wanna, I wanna put that out, as long as you guys will have me, I'm gonna remain the chief police.
Now let me step in.
So I'll let you go now, mayor, I'm done.
Got you. Yes, I was approached by two people. And they said, we understand that you fired Ben. And I said, oh, I'm aware of, and they said, well, we were told, yes, you fired the police chief.
Did you ask him to hold him?
No, I fired the police chief and I have no plans to fire the police chief. Then, I turned around and get another telephone call. And this was the first of this week. Uh, I didn't know that Ben resigned yesterday, I said, he did, and they said, yeah, he resigned. I said, I think he would have probably came and gave me his resignation if he had, I said, and then I told that person exactly what all else had been said and they understood the area. So let me make it clear, while I'm on camera and while I'm right here from the newspaper, our police chief has not been fired by me and he has not resigned and I don't plan on him going anywhere. So, the police department is not gonna be dissolved, it's not gonna be left here. It's not even an option to me here at all.
Well, we've got, we've got some great ideas, especially as far as community involvement over the next year or so. Things don't happen overnight that we wanna be a part of within our community. Um, so I'm looking for a better, stronger police department as we continue. Um, not wanting to maintain where we're at. I, I want us to get better, more community involved, um, and, and like I said, the guys I have now, I've got a great team. I've got, I've got some really, really, really good guys and.
You come up to, to, do, are you still two guys down?
I'm a, I'm a guy and a half down.
One down?
That's unfortunate.
How you gonna find a half a guy?
Well.
I wanna know what you're doing with the half a guy.
Which half?
We don't know.
I don't have that question.
No, I have a, I have a full-time investigator, you know, so I, I could not really, uh, I, the, the size of our city does not warrant a full-time investigator. And I have one that, that fortunately, that whenever I need him, he can come. And, uh, so he keeps his part-time hours up and he does a great job. He's helped us get a lot of, we, we've, we've probably taken more warrants out on, uh, drugs this year than, than in the past ten years for this city. So we've, we've been making, we've been making strides.
That's why you getting fired, 'cause you had that to me with somebody.
I guess so. My problem is.
Is, is that half officer's name Solomon?
No.
You hire half a people and they get the hat to wear, the, either that or you burn the hot dogs, put the dog on thing with the young ones.
I didn't burn the hot dogs, they enjoy it.
Cause it was three hours a week.
It's probably speaking around, so far so good, right? That's what the guy said, he called out the hundred-story window, as he was passing fifty, he said, well, so far so good.
And on, on the, the extra position that I have open, I'm, we have been looking for a team member, not just another employee. You know, I, I, because I care enough about my guys, I wanna make sure the right person's there. And we've all agreed, we've all had to pull some extra duty, but if that's what it takes for us to find the right fit, not only for my department, but for this city, you know, uh, the interaction with, with the citizens, you know, we'll, we'll wait, we'll wait a little while. And I guess I'm not trying to be too picky, but I want, you know, I want what fits best for us here.
I got a question.
Ask the one.
Uh, when I got here, uh, I had this local public official survey, what's the purpose of that?
It was brought in by the city of Ashburn, they wanted to spill it out and pick it up Monday. I have no idea what the provenance of it is.
Okay.
That's all I've been told.
Cool, Ben?
I told you everything I know. You have any ideas, Sean?
It's a survey for the gas department for the city of Ashburn.
Okay.
Well, they just got one gas line and it runs all the way to the prison.
No.
Right?
No, they're impossible.
Did it, from Sycamore?
Yeah.
I didn't know that they have that one.
Yeah, they got one on Bussy, a six-inch main, they got the one coming out of, uh, down to Lawrence, down to the prison. Got the two, they got one running up industrial to the backside of the gym.
All right, I got motion to pay bills.
Move pay bills.
Second. All in favor?
Move go home.
Second.
All in favor? So carry, we are here.
Thank you.